And the other county employees who are present. I call this meeting to order and we'll have our roll call. Yes. Ms. Perkins-Williams, would you do our invocation for us? Thank you. Please stand for the invocation and the pledge. And Alex, would you do the pledge? Thank you. Please bow your heads. Dear Lord, thank you for another day. Thank you for the day that we've not seen before. We are here under special circumstances to do your will for God's people. Touch our hearts, our minds, and our bodies that we may be healed and let us know that we must come together as a people. All these things, I pray in your name. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Please face the flag.
Let it lead to me to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So move.
We have a note and a second. Let's vote, please.
Madam Chair, if it's an order, I'd like to make a motion that we go live.
Okay. Is there a second to that motion?
Sure.
I don't know what that entails.
Don't we need to ask Mike first?
That's what I'm saying. I'm not sure what that entails.
I've discussed with him. He said that it was very quick process. Let me just make sure.
Okay. Well, it's been, we've got to vote, but I just wanted to know if it was possible. All in favor of going live, please vote yes. Mike, how do you vote on that?
Yes.
Yes?
Sure.
Okay.
That passes.
Yes, it passes.
Hold on just a second.
Okay.
I'm gonna switch this over to on air. That will be the screen that's on air. I'll give you a brief countdown and then cold open, no intro, you'll just fade into you. If you see yourself on screen, you can begin talking.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Good evening. We are now on air. I call this special called meeting of the Board of County Commissioners to order. We are here this afternoon to address the structure of the Industrial Development Commission, and that is the only business that we may address in this special meeting. We have one commissioner on the phone that is out of state. Commissioner Fitzpatrick, are you still there?
I am.
Okay, I understand you have a motion. Would you please make that at this time?
I do. At this time, I would move that both the county commissioners and the Industrial Development Commission postpone their special meetings and instead we schedule a joint meeting of both boards prior to the end of the year to cooperatively address areas of concern. I would further move that neither board take action relative to policy or personnel prior to the joint meeting.
Okay. Did we have a second to your motion?
I didn't hear everything you said.
Okay, I was gonna ask Ms. Hines to read that. Did you not get it either?
I really couldn't hear him very well. I got part of it.
Okay. Mike, would you state that again, please?
Sure. Can you hear me now?
Yes, a little bit louder.
Okay. At this time, I would move that both the county commissioners and the Industrial Development Commission postpone their special meetings and instead schedule a joint meeting of both boards prior to the end of the year to cooperatively address areas of concern. Further, that neither board take action relative to policy or personnel prior to the joint meeting.
Okay, did everyone hear?
Yes.
Okay, and we have a second to that motion. Is there any discussion?
Yes, please.
Okay. Mary, I saw your hand first, then Chris, and then Tom.
For the record, I have not touched my clicker.
I'll clear out your vote. I will.
I don't want anybody to think I clicked it in osmosis.
You have Tom's button now. You've got the yes key.
Okay.
The screen's been cleared.
Just a question for our board attorney. If I'm correct, we would have authority to move to postpone this session and then to recommend, recommend that the PCDC postpone its special meeting, but I'm not sure that this board has authority to, I guess, make a motion to dictate whether or not the PCDC has a meeting. So would it be a recommendation and then ask? Is that, is that correct? Mike, does that, does that sound correct?
Mike, you're recommending that this take place, correct?
That's correct.
Yes, and that's consistent. The Industrial Development Commission is an independent commission, and this board appoints to it, points its members. So, yes, it is true that the development commission can meet anyway.
Okay. Thank you for the question.
Okay. Mr. Coulson.
Madam Chair, I am of the understanding that the reason that we're here today is because, and I heard this myself, and I assume other members heard it, that the Industrial Development Commission was gonna call a special meeting tomorrow morning and that there are several things that were gonna take place. If you want, I will enumerate them, but let's say at this point that they're very unpopular with me. The Industrial Development Commission is a board that's created by state law that is appointed by the County Board of Commissioners. A number of members on that board and their terms are within the discretion of the County Board of Commissioners. The county levies and collects development tax for the purpose of county industrial development. In February of this year, the Board of Commissioners directed that the county maintain its own Industrial Development Commission and pursue the hiring of an executive director for that I've been advised that the Industrial Development Commission intends to circumvent the Board of County Commissioners, and that is not appropriate. It is not appropriate for them to decide to fire a brand new.
Madam, Madam Chair, this conversation's out of order.
No, it's not. No, I got every right to say what I wanna say.
This is a personnel matter. It ought not to be addressed in the open session of our commission.
And you're right, and you shouldn't have done it either.
This is the second time. It's out of order.
And you shouldn't be calling.
This is out of order.
We'll hear from the attorney.
So, the hiring and firing of the Director of the Development Commission is a matter within the exclusive jurisdiction of the Development Commission, and it is a personnel matter as it relates to the Development Commission. We're on a motion for, we are in the discussion phase of a motion to postpone meetings, and the discussion is relative to whether or not we ought to postpone that meeting. As your parliamentarian, I, the ultimate decision rests with your chair, but I would not find that discussion about the reasons to postpone or not to postpone the meeting would be out of order. It's not a personnel matter for the county. It's a personnel matter for the United States.
Madam Chair, I wish to make a substitute motion.
Okay.
My substitute motion is that effective immediately, today, right now, this hour, that the current Industrial Board is terminated, that they no longer, that they are no longer in, in possession of their, their appointed seats. I also say, think that what we should do as a Board of Commissioners is consider having a restructure such that there is a commission, so that the Industrial Board has a person appointed from every commissioner district, District 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, ABC, total of nine members. I also would like to make in my motion that the chairman's appointment be an ex officio board member without voting authority.
Is there a second to that motion?
That is my substitute motion.
I want to understand.
Okay.
When you said that, the first thing you said was to terminate the Industrial Commission immediately?
The problem is, Mary.
No, I just wanna know if that's what you want to do. And for how long will it be?
The current members that hold office, they no longer, my motion is, is that as of right now, if it passes, that they, that they're no longer holding any office, that we are going to have to, as Board of Commissioners, reappoint nine new members, which gives every commissioner the, at least two representatives that are gonna be on that board, that future board, from their district.
I understand.
Okay. Any, did we get a second?
Second.
Okay. We have a second.
We have a second.
Okay.
Two from every district, that's fair.
Could we have that motion repeated, please?
Effective immediately, the current Industrial Development Commission Board be terminated with the Board of Commissioners to restructure the Development Commission Board to include an individual from each district, and the chairman appointment of the Industrial Development Commission be a liaison member with no voting authority.
Correct.
Did she quote your motion as?
Yes, yes. I say terminate, expire, whatever you wanna call it.
You said two from each district.
Well, what's gonna happen is, because it's an ABC, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 districts, just as the Board of Commissioners has two, or the people in the, in the different areas have two representatives that, that speak for them, so will the, the new structure on the Industrial Committee, Commission.
Okay. Madam Attorney, did you have a comment?
No, I just wanted to clarify the law and make sure I understood the intent of the motion, and so the, the Board of County Commissioners has the authority under state statute to appoint members, to set the number of members, and to set the, the terms of those members. So I thought I heard, but just wanted to clarify, when you say remove, do you mean cause the terms to expire?
They are to expire immediately, right now, effective if, if this motion passes, as of this moment.
Okay. That was the clarification I was seeking. Thank you.
Madam Chair. Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Tom Coulson, I want to understand if they expire immediately. What's the time period? Because I don't see this county operating without a Development Commission.
Well, I would agree with that.
What's the time period you?
I think that we, as the members, then should decide, that is a secondary issue, whether it happens in December, whether it happens in January, whether it happens right now. I think that ought to be a secondary issue. But my point is, is that we need to restructure it to where it's nine members.
May I ask him another question?
Yes, ma'am.
Since his motion on the floor, and I seconded it. I want to know, does that affect the personnel in the Development Commission's office?
The county employees will not be affected in any way, shape, or form by this.
Okay, is that it? Did you have a question?
I have a clear understanding.
Mr. Nunley?
Are we gonna have discussion?
That's what I'm doing right now.
Okay, yes. So, members of the commission, and Mary respectfully, and Tom, when this, the voters of Pitt County in 1958 voted to establish an independent Industrial Commission, they did so with a mind toward making sure that politics did not interfere with business. As you know, politics, especially backroom politicking, gets in the way of the business of the people. And what is proposed here is putting the politics of this board above the will of the people. This is, members of this commission who are unhappy with direction that they get from professionals in the field, and we've been working hard to get a better board this year. But when this, members of this commission are not happy with how those individuals act, rather than trust that commission, they seek to undermine the voters that are there, that the commission is there to advance, the business interests of this county, the business interests of your part of the county. Members of this commission just kicked off an individual that works diligently in your district to make sure that there are people that have jobs. And so don't take, let's not let our eyes be closed to what's really going on here. This is politics, and the dirtiest of politics that this county's ever seen.
Madam Chair, I'd like to respond to this.
To have meddling at this level will go down in the history of this commission as a stain. We cannot allow the will of the people to be subverted. Then, when I say the will of people, we're talking about the real people who voted to enact the Industrial Commission, and that that commission be separate and apart from this commission for this very reason, so that this commission doesn't get on a high horse and vote to eradicate everyone in that commission because they're not happy with what they've got to say. That is not how we do business. We do the business of the people. We do the business of the people, and that's the trust that the people put us here to And if you're not happy with, if, so, what's next? If you're not happy with the way that the superintendent does business, just do away with the whole school board. No, because they're elected. They're elected. Our commission, the Development Commission, was voted on and approved by a public vote, and I would argue that there's questionable legality about whether or not this board subverting, subverting that directive and essentially co-mingling the Board of Commissioners with, with what, what it is, is a, is a blatant violation and unconstitutional abuse of power. And so I just, I implore the members of this commission to stand on the people's voice and the people that are here in this auditorium tonight that are asking us to stand in the way of a power grab. Do not let it happen. We cannot let it happen, because that's what it is. It is a power grab of the most heinous quality, and that's what it'll be taken for, and we have to stand up. We cannot let it happen, and you cannot trust that there's any other motive.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Coulson, you were next.
I find it amazing that people that live in glass houses choose to throw rocks. The reason that we're here is because, and I talked to Randy, Randy wasn't invited to Monday's meeting, talk about secret and behind the board and stuff, stuff that you guys were gonna do on the commission. The, the fact that you were going to insist that we, that, that they join the, the Alliance without the direction of us saying, you know, we, we voted against that. There are many things that you're, you're claiming that is heinous. Well, think of your own actions. That's what's driving this. That's why we're sitting here today, Chris.
Tom, the, the Development Commissioner.
Is that appropriate? To converse between?
So, all comments should be made to the chair, and people should speak when recognized by the chair.
Okay, that was.
Madam Chair, may I respond?
Have you finished, Mr. Coulson?
For now.
We'll hear from Chris Nunley.
Madam Chair, members of the board, the PCDC did pass a resolution last year in support of joining the Greenville-NC Alliance and, and nudging this board, hopefully, to move in that direction as well. However, that resolution never made it before this commission, so.
It was presented, though.
It was presented.
Each commissioner did present.
In the news packet, yes.
And by via email, each commissioner.
Yeah. But there is not a situation where any member was not noticed of our properly called special meeting on Monday. So, so I firmly reject your allegation that Mr. Walters was not informed of that meeting.
I talked to Randy, and he told me he wasn't.
I will just, I will just state that every member, every member of the Development Commission was properly noticed for that called meeting, and, and, and the record will clearly reflect that. So any indication otherwise is just a falsehood. It's just a falsehood. And we can pull up the record now, Madam Clerk.
Madam Chair, I have nothing more to say. I'd like to call for the vote.
Okay. I'll hear from Mary, and then I'll hear from Alex. I will, okay, oh, and I'm sorry, Melvin had his hand up first, so I'll do it in Melvin and then that order and that order.
My bottom's leaking.
Okay, Melvin.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I think that Mr. Phil Patrick comment and his suggestion on how we to, to move on this, and I second that, we should do it, because we should be acting on the, on the will of the people, and I think that if we can get together as a board and try to work out this solution, we can do it. To abruptly do something and that, that the will of the people is, is, is not even taken in consideration, that bothers me. And I, I was certain, hope that this board can move on the suggestion of Mike Phil Patrick, that we meet with the board, Development Board, and work out this, and I think we can. So that's my comment.
Okay. Alex?
Yeah, I wanna thank you, and thank you, Commissioner McLawhorn. I echo your, your comments and your support of Commissioner Fitzpatrick's, Fitzpatrick's motion. Unlike Commissioner Coulson, I have no idea what's going on here. Something is going on outside the confines of the meetings, and people are talking and coming to these meetings with ideas and plans that the rest of the commission is not aware of. I'm totally in the dark here, and for us to take a vote in this kind of haste and dissolve a board of professionals that we have supported and, and appointed is, is mystifying to me. This is a solid board we have. They're doing terrific work. These are professionals. I don't need to come in and say, here's somebody from Fountain that doesn't know anything about development, and because they're in my region, therefore, they deserve to be, to replace the professionals that we have, that this commission has chosen. And it's very surprising to me to hear this comment, that you all know why we're here, when I clearly don't have any idea, and I'm very disappointed at the haste. You know, this is like a Sunday afternoon, done to preempt a meeting that's been called, a meeting that was canceled on Thursday and then rescheduled for Monday, and there's just way too much going on in the extra fear here for us to make a hasty decision like this. And again, I support your, your words of wisdom, Commissioner McLawhorn, and Commissioner Fitzpatrick's good motion.
Madam Chair. Okay, Mary, you were next. I'm sorry.
Yeah, thank you. You aren't the only one in the dark, Alex. Commissioner, Commissioner, all right, you're not the only one in, in the dark on some things. And I learned it from the newspaper, and one of the residents said, Commissioner, have you seen the newspaper today? And that was Saturday morning. And I said, no, so I read it Saturday afternoon. Then I called the one person that I know would be straightforward with me, who's on the Development Commission, and he did get a notice that they are to meet tomorrow morning at, tomorrow is something, Monday, at 8:00. I learned that on the way over here. Now, all of this that's going on, I consider it backdoor meeting, because evidently there's discussion going on among the board beyond what we do at this diocese. Now, I, my vote goes with my committee, my district, because these are the people who elect me most of the time. I know some, all of them don't vote for me, but for the most part, when they have something heavy, they do talk with me, and I listen because they do the, do the right thing. When the nomination came in, I read my packet, and there was one, I checked the background. I know a lot of the background, and I did not know the gentleman that I interviewed. So, development is very important to my district. Development is something we want. We want industry that will hire blue collar workers. We want commercial development that will make our drive time less. We want development for houses so we can grow our communities. And then we want, since, we want people to make unbiased decision about a balanced county. If you get an email from me, you see what it says about what my termination is for the county. I like to see a balanced county, and right now, there are holes and voids in our county as far as development. I do agree that we need to meet, 'cause I don't know what's going on either. I do agree with that, and I certainly like the proposal that Tom said, that every district should be represented, because District 2 is, I will, I'm trying to say it positive, we just don't have anything that's straightforward. We don't have, we have two industries, and we don't have any other development for the most part, and we have needs. That takes the budget down, and according to the information that I get from planning, we have low economics. So we need a better system for development and economic. I think those who've been here for a long time and heard me make them sermons a long time, and I've always talked about getting good people to the board. I'm, 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 I'm with that. We need good people who can see things unbiasedly and try to bring that balance. So I vote my conscience. Now, we got a motion on the table, and as soon as Mrs. Gallagher, Attorney Gallagher, say now which one gonna go first, whether it's the substitute motion, or what other motion was it? Some other motion, I'm ready to vote.
Okay. We'll hear from Ms. Huggins, and then we'll proceed.
Well, I, I could support Mike's motion, but I'm afraid that with what the, our attorney said, that the Industrial Commission will still go forth with their meeting on Monday. So, and as, you know, I read in, in the newspaper, too, what was to happen at that meeting, and you find out a lot on Facebook, too. So when people on Facebook, they put their information out there on Facebook. Okay. So, you know, if there's an opportunity for the two boards to meet and work this out, I would love to see that happen, but I'm afraid that the Industrial Commission will go forth with their meeting on Monday with what they plan to, to do, according to what was in the newspaper, go into closed session. Go into closed session and take care of personnel issues. Elect new officers before the newly appointed officers come on board. So, that was what was in the newspaper. So, it leaves me... I'm greatly concerned about that Commission's, their behavior, their attitude, and what they plan to do. So, if we cannot undo what they will do tomorrow, again, that concerns me because we make those appointments. And if they want to give taxpayers money, if they choose to give taxpayers money to the Alliance, and we don't agree to that, that concerns me. So, with that said, if I have to vote, I will vote to take immediate action because of what they might do on Monday.
Okay, yes, ma'am.
Good point, Ann. But my thing of it is, is we came to this meeting, and this motion is on the floor by someone who's in, what, Texas somewhere?
No, but we have... Yes, we have two motions on the floor. The first one is the one that Mr. Coulson...
No, the first one was Mike Fitzpatrick.
I know, but the first one we vote on is the last one made. That's what I meant by that when I said the first one to vote. So, if you would read that motion, please. So, we'll be voting on the...
Madam Chair, it may be possible, if we take a brief recess, to reach out to members of the Development Commission to even see if this is something that even the Commission is amenable to. My concern is that... And Ann, your concern is valid. If we are to act on a motion to delay, and there's not an agreement amongst the membership of both Commissions to delay, and they trust there, then yes, you're right to not trust what will happen. I ask that if this Board would like to entertain Mr. Fitzpatrick's motion, that we entertain that motion after the liaison for that Commission has afforded the opportunity to contact members of that Board, to see if members of that Board would be amenable to canceling the special meeting on Monday and then rescheduling the joint meeting in the future. And I'm happy to make those telephone calls if necessary, Madam Chair.
Thank you for that.
Would the Board allow us to consider Mr. Fitzpatrick's motion first?
Can we do that, Madam?
Guys, this is Mike. Is Janice?
Janice?
Yes.
I'm asking her if we can consider your motion first.
Sure.
So, the rules of order, according to both your rules of procedure and Robert's rules of order, will say that if a motion is made and a substitute motion is made, that the substitute motion is voted on first, and then if it passes, action ends. If it does not pass, then you vote on the motion. Your rules of procedure govern your rules, and Robert's rules fills in where there are gaps. You are able to modify your rules of procedure by a majority vote of the Board. So, to the extent the Board would want to consider that motion, I believe that it is possible to reverse the order if you wish, although it would not be typical or not.
Make a motion to reverse order, Madam Chair.
Okay, we have a motion to reverse order.
What's that motion?
And second, is that appropriate?
I didn't even hit the clicker, did I?
I'm gonna...
Yeah, I want y'all to know I did not hit the clicker.
I've cleared you out.
Madam Attorney, is that appropriate, the motion? We can do that?
So, okay, so you currently have a motion on the floor and a substitute motion. And so, it is not in order to make a motion when you have a motion and a substitute, but since your motion is in order to vary from your rules in order to reverse the order, it would make sense to me that it be considered. Otherwise, it would frustrate the purpose of the action. And so, unless you rule otherwise, Madam Chair, I don't have a problem with it.
To vote on this motion, Madam Chair?
Yes.
It still does not speak to Ann's point. If you do that, it does not address her concern.
No, it doesn't. No, I agree. So, you know...
Can I...
Yes, ma'am, you can.
Some thinking while I'm speaking.
Yes, ma'am.
It might be more appropriate to... For Mr. Nunnely's motion to be a substitute to the substitute. And we've done that time and time again, where you can have as many substitutes as long as it's related to the same subject matter. And so, that would be cleaner than a motion. And a motion on the floor with a second, a substitute motion on the floor with a second, no action taken, and then a new motion made. That's really not proper. While I think it's logical, I don't think it's proper within the rules of procedure or Robert's rules. And so, it would need to be a further substitute motion, which would result in the motions being voted on in reverse order and that motion being voted on first.
Okay.
So, substitute motion to consider Commissioner Fitzpatrick's motion in advance of Commissioner Coulson's motion.
That's your motion?
Yes.
Is there a second?
A second?
Okay, so, we'll have to vote on that one first. Madam Attorney, can I just read the special meeting notice that was going out for the meeting tomorrow as discussion?
Yes.
I think it's very important that... I think there are members on this Board, as well as the public, who does not know the purpose of the meeting that was being called tomorrow morning at 8:00 a.m. And I'll read the special meeting notice. The Pitt County Development Commission, presently seated, will hold a special meeting on November 25th at 8:00 a.m. The meeting will be held at the Pitt County Development Commission, located at 111 South Washington Street, Greenville. The purpose of the meeting is to go into closed session under the guidelines for a personnel matter, to elect Pitt County Development... This is the second reason. To elect Pitt County Development Commission officers before the new development people appointed get on the Board. And to consider other economic development matters in open session, which is related to county money. For information, please contact the Pitt County Development Commission, and there's a phone number. And this was posted for the special meeting notice. And that's the reason for this called meeting tonight.
I have a question.
I do, too.
Okay. Yes, ma'am, you first. You're next.
After reading, is that the newspaper announcement? That's a public announcement for that?
Yes.
And it say county money?
Yes, ma'am. Well, it doesn't say that, but it's considered the economic development... Excuse me. Thank you.
May I see it?
It doesn't say county money, but it's economic development matters in open session. And there were specifics in the conversation. Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just to clarify the record, our bylaws at the Pitt County Development Commission dictate that at our final regular meeting of the year that we vote on and elect officers, and I'll read directly from our bylaws. The Officers' Commission selected from its own membership shall be a Chair, Vice Chair, Secretary, and Treasurer. These officers shall be elected annually at the last regular meeting of the year. Our last regular meeting of the year was canceled last week. So, to have our officers handled in a special meeting before the end of the year is not abnormal. In fact, it's so that we do our business diligently and effective. Second, there's been some conversation about a recent hire of Economic Development Director and a supposition that somehow that we're calling a meeting to act on that. Well, the county has a 90-day probationary period, and as a Board that oversees the hiring of our new executive director, it's our mandated fiduciary responsibility to discuss the performance of our Economic Development Director. We don't have those discussions in open session. Second, there's been absolutely no discussion about that Board giving away any county money to any entity. As a matter of fact, not a dime. Not a dime. And so, to say so or speculate so is just false. Not a dime. There has not been that discussion, nor is there an intention to have that discussion on Monday. But I will address again, I think that it would be beneficial so that the mystery can be lifted from what we're discussing here because, just like Alex, I had no clue what we were walking into today. But I think that it would be beneficial for me to discuss in recess with our Vice Chair of the Development Commission, who is in the audience, by the way, who would be able... Who called the meeting, who would be able to cancel that meeting if this Board feels like that that's a reasonable request from Commissioner Fitzpatrick, if that provides us the best way forward.
Madam Chair?
Okay, just a moment. I have Ann, and then Mary, and then Tom.
I was gonna ask, who called the meeting according to that?
Well, he just said.
The Vice Chair called the meeting.
The Vice Chair of the Development Commission.
And Randy knew nothing about it.
And the Chair did not know about the called meeting.
Which is illegal in anything that they would've said or voted on.
I will again read from my bylaws, Madam Chair. No, no, if mistruths are put before this Commission, we just have to set the record straight.
Yes, sir.
The Chair canceled a meeting without noticing our Board members, and our Vice Chair called a meeting so we could handle the business of the Commission. So, to indicate otherwise, somehow it's illegal, it's just a mistruth, Mr. Coulson.
Madam Attorney, can the Chair of a Commission or a committee call, cancel a meeting?
I was asked prior to the cancellation, and it was my opinion that he had the authority to cancel the meeting.
Okay, thank you. He did not do that without speaking to you first.
How about the Vice Chair?
Mary?
And the Vice Chair also.
And the Vice Chair, both. He's the one who can do it. Yes. Yes, ma'am. Mary, you and Alex. Okay, we need a three-minute break. We're back after informal recess. And Mike, can you hear us?
I can.
Okay, we have a motion to reverse our order and vote on your motion first, and we're gonna do that right now. And can we have that motion restated? Madam Clerk? Yes, the original motion.
So, you have three motions on the floor. You have an original motion to postpone these meetings and call for a joint meeting. You have a substitute motion to cause the terms to expire and to restructure the Board, the Development Commission Board. And then you have a substitute to that substitute, which is to reverse the order of the vote on those. Your first vote would be as to the order of motions.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to withdraw my second. I think that'll cut down some of these motions.
Withdraw her second from the substitute motion.
That messes it up, Mary.
Is that appropriate at this time?
We haven't voted on it, so to the extent she wishes to withdraw her second, what that will do is it will leave the substitute motion that was made by Commissioner Coulson without a second, then it makes moot your substitute to the substitute because you don't have two motions on the floor, and you only have one motion on the floor, which is that of Mike Fitzpatrick, seconded by Melvin McLawhorn, to call for a joint meeting of the Boards and request that there be no policy or personnel decisions until such time that both Boards meet.
You tell the truth.
Can we still have some... Can a statement be made before the vote is made? Just to reiterate? Yes, well, Chris Hannah was up first, and this is speaking to what?
To Mr. Fitzpatrick's motion to delay. And I can report, after a discussion with the Vice Chair of our Commission, who called the meeting, that he has agreed to cancel the meeting should this motion succeed in delaying...
Okay, that'll be done. Thank you. Ms. Huggins?
I just want to reiterate that that the meeting tomorrow, that I can support Fitzpatrick's motion...
With this?
With this. But, and that is if there is no meeting tomorrow.
Right. And this is what you said would happen?
Yes.
Could I say something?
Yes.
Ann, if you decide to go that way, if the Board goes that way, there's nothing that would prevent us from coming back and revisiting the motion like I made.
Okay.
Since I don't have a second, then I wish that... Because I had already thought we were doing the second substitute. Would you clear the voting?
Yes, I have cleared the voting. You're not on a voting screen right now. No, ma'am.
Okay, so, excuse me. We have a call for the question, and we'll take the vote.
Madam Chair, I would like to make one comment before...
Okay, please.
The Board of County Commissioners is offering to have a joint meeting and come to the table and get everything out in the open. No more secrets. I hope that the Pitt County Development Commission Board will honor the Board of County Commissioners' recommendation to postpone their meeting and be transparent with the public.
Thank you. And we have a question called... Would you read the motion, please, Madam Clerk?
The original motion offered by Commissioner Fitzpatrick, seconded by Vice Chair McLawhorn, is to... For the Board of Commissioners, the Pitt County Development Commission to postpone their meeting tomorrow, and for the Board of Commissioners and the Industrial Development Commission to hold a joint meeting for both Boards prior to the end of the year. And furthermore, neither Board take any action in regard to personnel items prior to the joint meeting.
I think there was policy was in there, too, I believe.
On personnel or policy, yes.
Personnel or policy. Okay, and we have a motion and a second. So, is that as read suitable to you?
Mike?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, all in favor of the motion, please vote.
Are we using the clickers?
You're using the clickers, and I'm gonna put it onto the screen right when she tells you to vote.
Okay, vote.
See there, I haven't even voted yet.
Press your click... The way the system works, the last number... Number one is yes, number two is no, three is abstain. The last number that you press... You can press 1, 2, 1, 2, 1, 2, as many times as you want, but the one you do last is what we'll record here. And when I show it, it's not what you want, make that known.
Okay, Mike, we'll take your verbal vote.
Yes.
Okay, that motion passes. I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Second?
Okay, we stand adjourned.